What is it, the ears?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh yeah.
Sorry, we're, um, we're transitioning between, um, the budget committee meeting and this meeting, so I apologize for getting started a little. Um, but we are going to hit the ground running. Um, so, so roll call.
Tom Hadaway, who Jessica King, who's our new lady of the workforce, cannot be with us tonight, so she'll be back in a while. She'll be with us in a while.
I actually want to point out, I, I spoke with Jessica and she was upset, she had already planned a, a three-week, she's gone, and so she thought the meeting was going to be on the fifth, so they got moved. She was upset she was not going to be here, and I told her I would pass that on.
Great, um, and Regan, you're gonna have to start sitting, because I, we're, like, keep looking over there.
Wow.
Is that too bold?
He's got all of her stuff out and displayed around.
Great, just come now.
Keep your distance.
Okay. Um, we received the minutes from our last meeting, which was scheduled on June 21st. I had to ask for a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second? And any discussion or amendments that need to be made? All those in favor of the minutes? Any appeals? Any abstentions? Okay. And we do have an adjustment to the agenda that was sent out to us regarding, um...
Yes, you'll have one personnel transfer and two nominations.
Right.
To supplement your other agenda.
Right. I always forget to check the sign-ins. Um, we have opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone that likes to address the board this evening? I'd like to also, um, I, assuming now I'll go on to the next portion of the agenda, I just wanted to thank those who came to the budget committee meeting. It was, I thought, um, I, I showed up late, um, but I thought the part that I was present for was, um, um, very well thought out and appreciate the work the admin team did, so I just want to take a moment to say thank you for coming and thank you to the admin team. And we'll go right into personnel.
Excuse me, under resignations, I have none to report tonight, but if you reference your agenda notes, let's go with the one that I put in the packet this evening. I would like, would like to announce that we have transferred Derek Smith from Handen Academy, uh, health teacher to the physical education teaching position at the Samuel Wagner Middle School. Now I have two nominations for you. The first one's a Spanish teacher here at Handen Academy, who's in the .5 position, Jennifer Norwood. You can see that Jennifer actually has been a teacher next to us for a number of years. This is a part-time position, based on that, her salary would be seventeen thousand seventy-five dollars. My recommendation is Jennifer Norwood, Spanish teacher, .5 here at Handen Academy.
Some more.
Second.
Any discussion? Right, all those in favor?
Who is Jennifer? There she is. Jennifer, congratulations. Next we move to the speech-language pathologist at Reedsbrook Middle School, Heidi Austin, with a bachelor's degree in University of Maine. She's been, uh, at East Main Medical Center for a number of years in the similar position. She's very excited to come to the educational environment, so I'd recommend to you Heidi Austin, speech-language pathologist, Reedsbrook Middle School, salary forty thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars.
Some more.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, I saw Heidi come in, where's Heidi? Way up ahead. Heidi, congratulations. Now to the agenda notes that were mailed to you on Friday. First of all, transfers, Brienne Smith from grade six to grade eight at the Wagner Middle School, Jennifer Dupre from physical education teacher at the Wagner Middle School to physical education teacher here at Handen Academy. Now moving to the nominations, we have .5, uh, teacher at Reedsbrook Middle School in area of social studies, a teacher that's been with us for a long time, over thirty years, Sue O'Brien. Based on the .5 status, Sue's salary would be thirty-four thousand four dollars. My recommendation for your endorsement, Sue O'Brien, social studies, .5, Reedsbrook.
Sue, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, 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 so there's Sue right there.
There she is.
Sue, congratulations. .4, FTE, full-time scholar here at Handen Academy in speech-language, Katherine Thibodeau. Again, Katherine has a bachelor's degree, uh, three years' experience at the full-time Reedsbrook Middle School. Her salary on the pro-rated basis, eighteen thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars. Katherine Thibodeau.
Can we have a motion? Some more. All those in favor?
Thank you, and where's Katherine? Uh, Kath- oh, I think she actually had to be up there. Thank you, Regan. Okay, now we go to Handen Academy, special education teacher, Amanda Tilton, bachelor's degree, University of Maine, you can see, also has been teaching up north in, uh, the Lincoln-Maloneau Cook Academy, also additional years there, as you can see, in educational technician responsibilities. Amanda's salary would be thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, social, uh, special, specialized teacher here at Handen Academy.
Motion? Second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Amanda, where's Amanda? Right there, Amanda, congratulations. Next we move to the Smith Elementary School, grade two, Emily Sterns, bachelor's degree in University of Maine, nine years in the elementary level, next door in R271, the Belfast area. Emily's salary per the prescribed collective bargaining contract, forty thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars. My recommendation, Emily Sterns, grade two, Smith Elementary School.
Jessica, is that you?
Yeah.
Jessica, make a motion. Any question? All of the favor?
Okay, where's Emily? Emily Sterns. And finally, uh, the Samuel Wagner Middle School, grade five math teacher, Michaela Mitchell, uh, bachelor's degree, you can see, been student teaching, uh, here in the Bangor Old Town area. Her salary for the prescribed contract is thirty-three thousand one fifty. Michaela Mitchell, grade five, at the Samuel Wagner Middle School.
Any question? All of the favor?
Okay, Michaela, congratulations. Congratulations to our new faculty and loved ones, R222. Okay, now we move on to the superintendent's report. This evening I'm going to ask Scott if you agree to state this, Scott, please?
Hey, if you can wait just a moment, because I just realized I was supposed to do that, so I have an open night. I guess, I guess. All right. Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens of our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are a community support systems that should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Scott. I had the occasion to present to the Acadia Hospital of Donor Appreciation, I've actually written up a few things, I'd like to read it for you, because sometimes, it came up in the budget committee meeting, sometimes we need to recognize and appreciate what goes on, and this one is pertaining to the partnership of the Acadia Hospital here at the, at the high school. And basically, the overview was here at the high school, we have access to a full-time social worker who's able to provide counseling services during the day-to-day, um, business for students. This gives students the ability to stay in the school, which obviously is opposed to labor school, which is advantageous, obviously, for the students as well as the family. Students who need assistance with the high school transition are identified by counselors early on with their high school careers. These students and parents are, are contacted, and once they give their approval, they begin to provide the services again here on the site. Many students are identified throughout the year as needing significant mental health support. Because we have a full-time Acadia liaison, we are able to make the contact with the proferent mental health professionals, provide additional support both in and out of school. Obviously, they work in close partnership with outside of the services as well. Our social worker here at Handen Academy also serves as a conduit for students to access management services. Our social worker is notified of any student who's admitted to Acadia Hospital throughout the year. This allows Handen Academy's school counselors, nurses, teachers to join and plan accordingly with organizing this, the social work as well as academic offerings. In addition, it helps with the transition back to school, allows the time to put a solid transition plan in place that benefits the students, parents, and school. So again, um, this is one of those things that we don't maybe sometimes see, but I believe we serve roughly twenty-five to thirty children on an annual basis here at Handen Academy, and that's kind of about with the, with respect to the partnership, uh, here at the Handen Academy with Acadia Hospital. I think I included, uh, with you the, I actually had a great opportunity there, because the, the presenters at the hospital gave some updates on some mental health issues that, that were actually stunning to me, if you will, and that was the one, and I can even begin to give this justice, that's why I gave the, but dealing with depression and how I can, I'm gonna look that, Amanda, you know far more than I do about this, but how they've actually had now virtual sites throughout the country that Acadia Hospital's providing. And one thing that I learned, which is probably very obvious to all of us, is depression is not cured by medication. And the research with this transcranial magnetic stimulation is phenomenal, and Acadia apparently is a frontrunner, one of the frontrunners in this country here. Did you want to add to that, man?
Well, I wouldn't say depression's not, well, depression's never cured, it's managed by medication.
There you go, thank you.
And counseling and some other interventions, but yes, Acadia is looking into, um, purchasing a TMS or transcranial magnetic, um, stimulation machine. That'll be exciting.
So the bottom line is, we really should be very pleased and gratified with respect to the partnership we have with the hospital and how our children benefit. Unfortunately, the next item is not as favorable, and that is after sixteen or seventeen months, the school-based hospital is not going to operate next year. It probably doesn't surprise you, I've kept you abreast over the months, East Main Medical Center has really worked with us graciously to provide the, the sources, however, I'm not going to give up. I have some other ideas, Brittany and I have talked about a little bit, and we'll certainly look to see if any other benefactors such as PCHC, whether St. Joe's Hospital, whether East Main Medical Center, or some other entity can maybe rise to the occasion to provide the services for our children, our students at Handen Academy. So, uh, just being informed and hopefully I can bring back to you at some future date how we can maybe reignite that opportunity. It was a great opportunity, and unfortunately, we could pull it off. Maybe it's advantageous, maybe the needs weren't here. Brittany?
I'd like to just add to that, that we will look at, um, maybe a different model utilizing the clinics that are already in our area, so East Main across the road, and they are willing to still be very open to us reaching out to them to get primary care providers and, and make appointments for them. Um, I do want to add on the Acadia theme, um, they were a, our financial benefactor for our symposium, um, they did grant us three thousand dollars to be able to run that, um, so I do want to thank them for, for their help and their willingness to want to continue the work that we're doing with our students who are identified and then with the general student body.
I also learned Dan Coffey, if you know Dan, Dan is the CEO of Acadia, he has announced his retirement in September, so we'd like to have that partnership, uh, developed or redeveloped with a new CEO here. The next item, and I, I don't want to read it to you, but we actually discussed it in the budget committee meeting tonight, is the most recent memo to main school management that has a number of positions in there, you can see, the budget is a hundred and sixty-two million dollars. A couple that I'd like to stress that we actually talked about is the infamous fifty percent and the clarity, and Regan and I actually had a conversation this afternoon prior to the receiving of the news of the state, to clarify with Greg Gimm, is that the fifty percent is a provision that was in place before the state funding level was known, that now in his estimation, and that's who I tried to call during the budget meeting, his dinner appointment, is that he affirmed with Regan and me today that fifty percent is no longer applicable, so that's the way we'll leave it, but we will revisit that. But one thing I did want to mention to you, if you look at the fourth bullet, the additional funding for economically disadvantaged students will be a target of the allocation, meaning districts will have to report on this, that's a tremendous tracking situation, what that basically means. So Lynn Wells, you and I need to talk about that, because basically they're looking at the substantiation or the optimization of the expenditures there. The next bullet down, probably shouldn't be too concerning to us yet, but you need to be aware of it, and that is the funding for the declining enrollment is eliminated. So if you have cousins, aunts, and uncles, whatever, neighbors and districts that have declining enrollment, that's a drastic influence on your school subsidy. Okay? Title I funds have been removed, that's the good news. The bad news is they adjusted the teacher ratio reimbursement, so in other words, let me give you an example. In the past for K through five, they may have readjusted, they may have re, uh, recommended the, uh, the funding for teachers at one to fifteen. Now that may be one to eighteen, I haven't seen that yet, but just now, they're going to fund, uh, in the formula, fewer teachers than they have in the past, and that's how they offset the title I monies.
Right.
Yes.
Just can, can you go into, what do you mean with the, the title one offset? Because I think that was something that confused me when I first started.
That's a good question. So let's say we receive eighteen million dollars from the state of Maine, the bottom line that actually Mr. Metzger brought up tonight, eighteen million. Then let's say Mary, who oversees title I and title II, let's say Mary receives five hundred thousand, that eighteen million underneath it said minus five hundred, now it's seventeen million five hundred thousand, so they penalize you for receiving title money. They've eliminated that, but now it's dependent, gone elsewhere in the formula, Scott, and taking it over here, and that's the reimbursement for teacher-student ratios. The other one that came up in the budget meeting tonight that I'll look to research was the reimbursement for central, um, central office, system administration line. That started out from the governor being eliminated, and it looks like it's been cut by fifty percent. So that coupled with the Article VI loss of money of the, of the forty-two thousand, give or take, we need to talk about where does that intersect as well. So there's a lot of moving part in the school funding formula. I actually talked to main school management today to get greater clarity, and not surprisingly, they didn't know with the higher sense of clarity, all these moving parts as well, because with the state budget shutdown, and now with this being ramped up very quickly, in addition to that, four fifteen today, as I told, now that we receive the state subsidies, all being jammed at you, but you have to sit back and say, the virtue here, the asset is, we're gaining state money. And I think Rob did a nice job tonight with the budget committee to kind of slow that down and make sure that my wife is not right, and that is haste makes waste. Another article, take our time. Any questions on the significant moving parts as we see school funding formula? And then my wrap-up would be, remember, the intent of the legislature is to eliminate the essential programs and services funding formula. So that I've kind of put Regan on notice, somewhat comfortably so, what does school funding look like after this year? That's a major, major unknown question. So we need to, Karen, in the future, this year with our legislators, invite them in to have the same conversation, what they're doing to advocate for public education. And then finally, I think my guess was correct on the fifty-five percent. I think what you're gonna find is the state's gonna be able to have the comfort to say we're funding fifty-five percent, because the retirement money is figured in the bet. So if you hear people say, well, we're funding fifty-five percent, that was our intent, the question like you asked, like Scott tonight, is clarify that for me. Fifty-five percent is defined by what?
Right. That's next year, correct?
That's next year.
Because this year, there's money that was allocated, eighteen point seven or so million made it.
Yes.
To the schools next year, the other hundred and thirty million is next year, or, um, rough numbers.
So in the coming weeks, we'll continue, uh, to give you the information as it rolls out from main school management that, that you, but that's a very cursory thirty-thousand-foot overview. Any questions anyone can think of? Lot thrown at you right there.
I heard the governor on the radio say that some of the increased funding is tied to regionalization.
Yes.
You would withhold funding if you didn't regionalize.
Yes, that's true. Again, one of your bullets in here, there is an incentive to regionalize, we're gonna be, yeah, we're gonna be talking later about the VZ. I, I'll give ourselves a little bit of credit here. If that regionalization concept would have been implied four years ago, we had to reap the benefits by the regionalization.
Kickback.
And that's why I've indicated to the board, in my opinion, that we need to be visionary, we need to be somewhat assertive in looking at other opportunities that are advantageous for us in the future, and we shouldn't look at that with a sense of shallowness, if you will. Okay, uh, we have no student tonight? Regan, anything to add? Jack?
Well, I do have a report. So just to update you, we are, uh, working on a considerable honeywell project across the district, and the lighting component to that project is underway, and we're starting in Winterport with that. The other aspect that is something I'd like you to know about is that propane conversion is part of this project, and that is, um, to be started this summer, and we have received notice that, um, an aspect of the propane conversion at Reedsbrook will need to be discussed just a bit about the site. So we're working to, um, look over the site and make sure the placement is going to be adequate. We've been spending considerable time with the budget timeline, as I'm sure you're aware, and then today we did receive resignation of the Wetherby Bra head custodian, Dottie Wellman, so we will be posting for that position and moving forward with that.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Regan? Sorry. You said thank you, Karen.
Oh, no.
That's all right, I just...
No, thank you for allowing it. Thank you, Mark.
Um, oh, I see what you're saying.
Now, do that, you can do that.
I know.
I found now, when we're all ready.
Questions of the board members?
I went back and I tried to watch the video of the last budget meeting I missed, and I could barely hear anything that board members were saying. I know we had a, a discussion about audio/video recording, how can we make that better? So I, I would recommend maybe we come back to that, because I had to turn on closed captioning on YouTube, which was entertaining, to see what it was. But it was very difficult to follow. If anyone wants some entertainment, go back and check it out. I, I think it's something maybe we come back to.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Actually, if I could just address that, we were, um, one of the things that we want to do in the Community Relations Committee is look at inter, um, school communication, not just extra.
Yep.
And I think, uh, we, Nate and I had a brief discussion about the mics and how to mic things up, and, and that maybe we can do a little bit of work in that committee in terms of, how can we get it so that it's really audible, because it's just not. So, I mean, sometimes you can hear fine, other times it's just not, and, and we can't, you know, we had a, a quote in terms of getting everybody a mic that was astronomical, that's not gonna happen, but is, is, are there things we can do, and we can start looking at, at alternatives? Because I think we have, you know, I, we have a good thing started, but we need to improve it.
Listen, we start, yes. Thank you.
I didn't realize you were looking right at me, so I turned to the camera.
This discussion of propane tank just prompted a memory, are we supposed to have a tank taken out by this summer in the Wetherby parking lot, or is that another year away?
The bus park, so what?
Okay.
Next year?
It's over here, okay.
Where are we at with the water tank in Winterport-Wagner?
We have not had another meeting with the water district, and so that will be on the docket for August, to maybe then see where we are.
I can add, like, we, we've had, we've had a crew down and they kind of like looked at a, a location, and they walked through the woods here, and, you know, they, they were down a couple of times, doing some surveying and things, so, yes.
One question I have, the, um, when we used the alert system in June for that meeting, it wasn't very well received, at least from the people that I spoke with, definitely think we should do it for July 25th and possibly even 18th.
We have a piece about that in the Community Relations, um...
You got it?
Well, there's, there's a piece in the, in my report.
Any other questions from board members? So we'll move on to committee reports, and we have Finance and Budget Committee, do you want to... Did he please?
He's over there.
Oh, he?
Yeah.
And it'll look in that way. Do I look younger just because we're sitting on the end? We, we haven't had any Finance Committee reports, uh, other than, I didn't see our report in the packet. Was that not in there today?
Am I just, not in my...
Our warrant report, that was not in this packet. So we'll correct that for next time.
Got it.
Can I know, uh...
We're having a sidebar conversation.
No, so, Finance hasn't been, as far as anything other than budget finance, so...
Didn't we talk about, um, changing the policy so that we were doing a quarterly finance state report? Is that the policy we're approving tonight? Okay.
Yeah, hopefully, yes.
Okay. Rob, Budget Committee?
So, there is a, a June, uh, memo or, or minutes in your packet, but there's also a, a, a single page, uh, handout here, uh, from this evening's meeting, and recap, as you read down through the FY18 budget development, the takeaway is good news, um, somewhere on the magnitude of either four hundred and sixty to five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, depending whether it's compared to this current year's pending budget or last year's budget, because if you recall, this year we had a minus one hundred and fifteen thousand dollar, uh, starting point, so we're going to clarify that. At any rate, whether it's four hundred and sixty or five hundred and sixty-five, great news compared to a loss of one fifteen. We did talk and, and recommended that the board approve the, uh, .5 tech integrator, K through eight, the .5 art teacher, K through one, uh, for board approval at, at tonight's meeting, and in your packet you'll see some date changes, or actually, there's a modification to those, uh, that the next full board special meeting to adopt budget would occur on July 18th, and that would allow us to keep the district budget meeting as previously anticipated on July 25th, which now means it can be as, or will be advertised, uh, within seven days of the 18th. Uh, we would then have our budget validation referendum on August 1st, as originally anticipated, and as will be notified on July 26th, I guess. We also, uh, to begin the minutes, aren't, uh, we just had the meeting, we talked about eliminating Article 20 and the resolution that accompanied it, uh, what to do if additional state monies were received, now that we know that we are receiving additional state monies, we will know what we are doing with those, and we'll have those allocated once the amount is clarified and entered into our, our local, uh, assessment calculator, if you will, and the two positions that we talked about are approved by the board, if they are approved by the board. We talked about adding, recommended adding six thousand dollars into the, uh, Article VI budget line item, which is under system admin, under the board item for the second round of budget cycles, uh, basically to cover the cost of the advertisements, the warrants, of the meetings, the attorneys, and the ballot clerks. We talked about the date changes, and then we also talked on August, I'm sorry, on July 18th, of having the articles prepared and ready for board approval with the scenarios that we will adopt tonight with positions. And again, the AV issue, if we want to bounce that around before the budget is prepared, but again, I know we were somewhat astonished at the number before to, it seems to me that what we're trying to accomplish is to protect voice, maybe just relocating where people sit might be helpful.
Do you want to also talk just about the resolution more in terms of the sentiment that we will be...
Right, so the resolution, um, the purpose of the resolution was, what, what would happen, uh, if we received additional money from the state? And we made a commitment as a board that we would commit, uh, the first portion of that, I think it was two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars at the time, we were, or an amount up to two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, to reduce local share, and then the additional amount we would look at considering reinstatement of positions as deemed, or as, uh, as made appropriate by staff recommendation. So our intent is still, now that we know we're potentially getting four hundred and sixty thousand to five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, to look at those simultaneously, that reinstatement of positions that, that the budget committee, uh, move forward, there may be some other, uh, positions that are discussed, uh, outside of, or, uh, in addition to at this meeting or at the next full board meeting, but more importantly, when Regan has an opportunity to get clarity on the, the additional state revenue, to plug in the, what that means to the local assessment, we'll actually know if we've had that impact that we've talked about of the two hundred and fifty-eight thousand or so. We will not be changing the amount that we pay down from the unallocated fund balance, it is required by law now that we pay down five, five hundred and forty thousand dollars to reduce that to three percent of our, uh, prior year, uh, budget, and that will continue to happen every year. So if monies are not spent during FY17 that go back into that fund, we will then be paying those back down, uh, each subsequent year, and so on and so on, so, um, it's, it's fortunate that we're in a position to do that, it's my understanding that the July payroll may be coming out of that unallocated fund balance. We understand that the towns have made a commitment to pay their assessments, uh, based on the June 8th budget approval, but, uh, hopefully we will be able to circulate a new assessment in time so that they...
Just for clarity, Handen has.
Has Handen already been locked into the June 8th numbers? Do we know?
No, they have, uh, no, but they're the only, they're the only community in...
Handen.
Yes.
Handen, right. So that's really it for, uh, the budget update, again.
I just had something to add. When we were talking about the two hundred and fifty-eight thousand in our, in our resolution that we had written, to, we, our goal was like two percent. So in order to get to that two percent now, we'll need more than the two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, because now, instead of being at a four point five, a roughly local increase, now we're at a five point eight, so we need more...
That's true.
More there to drop that to two percent. We need about four hundred and fifty thousand. We need about $450,000 to get down to 2%.
That's correct.
So what that means, right, all or most of that $460 may be spent reducing local share based on the June 8 budget, which did include monies that would cover the two positions that the Budget Committee recommended reinstating tonight. So that's an updated budget.
So clarity on that will be July 18th.
July 18th.
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Athletic Committee?
Yep, we met last week. And as Rick indicated earlier, we were introduced to our new Athletic Committee, I mean, our new Athletic Director, Fred Lauer. The main purpose, the main focus of our meeting was we were talking about the multipurpose field. As you all know, the field was erected in 2003, and it's met, it's exceeded its expectations. We've done a really good job taking care of it through the years. So, you know, we've got two or three years left in it, usable years. We'll continue to maintain it, try to get as much as we can, but it's something that we need to look at really soon. So indications, look at $700,000 to $800,000 for replacement costs. We have the fund, the gate receipts, it's under $100,000, so that's far from what we need to fix that field. The, we're looking at sponsorships, and looking at, we talked about education funds, different things that we could do to increase the revenue to that. Mr. Bissin had started with some signage and some sponsorship, and Mr. Lauer's going to continue that, in that direction. That was something that the board actually had approved probably six months ago, at least, last fall at least. And we talked about the scoreboard that's in storage that's never been put up down to the Reed Brook, Reed's Brook baseball field. That's all ready to be installed. And we had a discussion, we had a Glenburn residence actually reach out to myself and is interested, they have middle school students in Glenburn that play football, but they really don't have a home for them because they don't have a, a middle school, they don't have a middle school program. Their, their kids can either go to Bangor or Bab's, they have school choice. Orno has, had accepted them and allowed them to play up there, but that's not really where they want to go to high school. So they've, they've reached out to us, looking at maybe, asking us if we would consider allowing them to play middle school sports at Reed's Brook or at Reed's Brook Wagner combined. So that was a discussion that we had. We need to continue that discussion. We looked at some numbers as far as participation numbers last year were high, they're going to be a little bit lower this year, so that would be advantageous for that. But in our next meeting, we'll discuss that in detail. We discussed lacrosse, viability of such, where we would play it.
For both boy and girl?
We discussed it a year or so ago about girls. There was a club, girls had some interest, but I don't really know where that had gone. So, but yeah, evidently, eventually it will be a boy-girls type thing. It's coming, all the middle school boys, girls are all playing it. It's a club sport right now in Bangor, so a lot of our students are playing it already at the middle school level. So it's, it'll be at the high school level, is a need there. And that pretty much wrapped us up. Any questions?
One thought, I had a conversation with Town Manager Angus Jennings about, because there was some capital needs that the town of Hamden had as well, and he mentioned just the possibility of collaboration, possibly doing some joint efforts. It might be worth just having a conversation to explore how that might look, because he had some ideas I thought were pretty intriguing.
Yeah, as far as what their field exploration would mean or?
Just possibly putting up a public plea or opportunity for community members to donate, either to support a capital project within the town or within the school district, and it'd be maybe advantageous to have a conversation and possibly figure out if there might be an opportunity for that.
Were there any possibilities as far as grant funding?
I also probably think there is opportunities for joint, maybe applications for grant funding for community improvements to increase opportunity, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I know that, that echoes, we've had conversations with the Winterport Rec Director and, and Town officials that the Winterport fields that need serious upgrade in order for, like, the kids at Wagner can't play baseball at our baseball fields, they come to hand it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's another, maybe we can work on some community engagement in terms of trying to see what we can do with those fields as well.
Yeah.
Building Committee? Education Committee? We have not met. Policy, do you have anything other than what's on the agenda? Any update?
We met last night. We had a community member, we had a discussion around maybe developing a policy or resolution around when law enforcement shows up at our buildings, what we do, in particular when it comes to immigration, sharing that type of information. So we started the conversation last night, and I think we'll have more to share at the next meeting.
UTC, anything there?
Yeah, there was a meeting last month and centered around budget validation, and it was kind of interesting because RSU 22 is the only member that doesn't have a budget yet, and it's kind of throwing the monkey wrench into their validation process. And then the other interesting thing is the enrollment is up for the upcoming year, and Hamden's up around, or RSU 22 is up around 115, 117, something like, like a 30-student increase.
Wow.
It went from 85 to 115.
That's awesome.
So they're really taking advantage of the programs that are being offered there.
Great.
That's great news. But just keep in mind, just keep in mind, there's a price tag with that. So I think probably in the past, I'll pick on Nick again, Nick, we've been floating around 85 to 87 students?
Yeah, we've never needed an additional bus, and that might be close to having an additional bus.
Okay.
Do we need to consider that when we would look at our budget for next year?
That's a good, that's a good question.
We have time.
That's a good question.
Unlike other districts.
Because that's strictly a per pupil fee.
Yeah.
So we'll look at that.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Just a straight ahead count?
Yeah, yes.
But it'd be good if we.
Not a weighted three-year average?
Who tries, Scott?
Correct that now before we have to pull money.
We will look at, yeah, we'll look at that for Tuesday for.
Exactly.
Any ad hoc, and Community Relations Committee?
Yeah, we've had two meetings. Our first meeting was to get the, get the ball rolling. We established some main goals in terms of getting information out around the budget. You know, the meetings that were coming up were something that was very important to do. We set some basic goals of establishing a Facebook presence for the district because currently the schools have Facebook presences, but the district did not. Working on a budget narrative, which is a slightly different way to explain the budget. It's as opposed to numbers or some bullet points, a budget narrative calls attention to the big changes in the budget and then discusses how those changes came about, what are the, the cost drivers and that sort of thing. But in more of a conversational style, less bullet points, factual, just short statements of fact. And also the Frequently Asked Questions document, which we've all been talking about for quite a while, and that's very close to done. We are actually going to try to solicit some public comment on it, some public help with it, because what answers the questions to us may very well not answer the question to folks in the community. So one of the things that I'm going to try to do with the new RSU 22 Facebook page is try to use that as a way to get some public comment from it and some other sources as well. The Facebook page currently has 220 likes and eight follows. It's, you follow somebody if you don't like them enough to like them, but you want to know what's going on. So we have eight of those as well. Our, our second meeting, we had Rochelle Lawrence, a community member, sat in with the, with the members of the committee. And actually, it was great to have her there. It was having input that was not from somebody who was ensconced in the school board is really helpful at the meetings, and hopefully, hopefully by getting word out about the meetings, all the committees might benefit from that a little as well. We had a wonderful report on, on how the VZ, the VZ agreements work, how the structure works, to really explain to us, this is how things are segregated out and how monies do not co-mingle and so on and so forth. And we, we've talked with Regan and Ann about maybe having that done to the larger board or in some other fashion so that we can continue talking about that, because I, it's an important topic. Town managers of, of all the towns and Frankfurt have all agreed to post things on their Facebook page or allow me to post things on their Facebook page, which anybody can do, it's not a special privilege, but.
But you feel better.
But I do feel better about it knowing that they're okay with it. Winterport has a sign downtown that they've already posted all of our meetings on, which I'm really glad we're trying not to change the dates of the meetings. So they, they have been very positive, all the towns have been very positive about trying to help get messages out. The school messenger system, which was the, the phone calls, texts, emails, which is how my wife found out about the meeting, not from me personally, were very successful. I, we hadn't really heard negative comments, I don't know if anybody had negative comments about it, but we have, we've heard very positive comments about that as a method to get it out. And we also discussed levels of import. At what point in time do you use that as opposed to the Facebook page and other things? And then on the Facebook page itself, what point in time do you post about a meeting as opposed to scheduling an event? And so we are, we're working through levels of import. We agreed that the district budget meeting is going to be something where using the messenger is a great idea. The actual day of the vote is something where, I mean, it's, it's going to be the August 1st. Who votes in August for things? So we're, it's going to be hard to remind people that this is the day to go out and do it. So, but there, there's going to have to, we're, we're trying to establish a threshold. At what, what level of import is that going to be? The Facebook page is up and running, been using it. Nate and Gloria and I have been working on trying to figure out the best way to get budget, or board docs on there so that it's, it's easy for somebody at this time. My wife, very patiently, turned every PDF into a PNG file so that we could post them all individually. God love her. And, but it's hard, it's hard to read. If you, if you went on to look at the documents, you have to look at each individual picture. It doesn't come through as a, if one single document doesn't come through as a set of pages, you have page one and then you have to close that and get to page two. So we're going to try to improve that. We're going to look for, yeah, we're going to look at what, what is our Facebook page for and what is it not for? We want to make sure that the information there is going to be easy to digest. And, oh, calendar, that was the other big thing. We are working on taking, not the district calendar that, that shows when people are going to be on and off and when school starts and ends, but the monthly calendar of board meetings and that kind of thing, and try to make that a subscribeable calendar. So, you know, I can subscribe it and all those meetings will just populate on your phone or computer or tablet or something like that. So that was another big thing.
Excellent work in a short amount of time to the Community Relations Committee. I just want to say thank you, and we all appreciate the effort. You're doing a great job online. And like us on Facebook if you haven't.
Or just follow, that's okay.
I think that too.
Leaning towards like more of just.
Great. So policy consideration, John?
So we have four, for second reading and adoption, hopefully. And I was just going to do it as a slate since there were no major changes. So it's reporting of child abuse and neglect, instructional library materials, fiscal accounting and reporting, and the regulation on more approval. And then we have changes from the first reading.
Make a motion, we consider those as a slate, if we can do that.
Second.
So we don't need necessarily a motion on the slate, but we need a motion to.
That.
Approve it?
Yep. Motion to approve all of them.
Second reading and adoption of, as a slate. That's what you meant.
That's a motion.
Okay.
Second.
And he's second. Okay. Any questions or discussion about any of the policies? Okay, all of us in favor? Any opposed? Great. Good work, Policy Committee. Well, business.
Discussing out the VZ contract that Scott just alluded to for the spirit of transparency. This is the continuation of the business office and also administrative services and IT services, so if I can go down through them if you have any questions. You can see with the exhibit before you that is itemized, as someone from the audience asked earlier tonight, you can see each person in the central office and what they receive for compensation from the money, in this case, so $63,000 that comes from VZ. The total expenses you can see at $43,400, and the net, in that category through the district is $19,600. Then you move to the administrative services, the administrative services is basically Gloria. It's not, obviously emails, not myself, it's Gloria to provide services to Superintendent Seer in VZ. You can see the compensation she receives and the net gain for the district there is $7,700. In IT services, which are overseen by Mr. Savage, you can see the stipends that those people receive, the total expenses from the $7,300 gives you a net gain of 13. And the bottom line, that the revenue that comes from VZ that flows independently, as Scott alluded to, is not co-mingled with RSU 22. That $28,600 is in the revenue line of the school district budget. So it would be my recommendation for the board to consider the continued services in the business, administrative services, and technology for VZ for 17 and 18, with the notion of the itemization, the delineated, delineated in your exhibit that you have.
Just a, in the discussion, I guess just a point of clarity, and I know it may come out in the communication, but there is one person who was formerly a part-time person who is not receiving benefits, who in performing basically now full-time responsibilities and administering VZ is receiving part of their benefits, compensation from VZ and part of it from RSU 22. So some of it is flowing through this agreement, some of it is flowing directly from RSU.
Thank you, Rob. If you look, if you look just to amplify that with Rod's point, the one-half position that's Penny Robichaud in my office, before VZ came into existence, that was a half-time position. To adjust to meet the needs of VZ, that position was increased to full-time, and Rob just explained that's how that came about with the $26,976. The other people so noted there, go down through, were people in my office that picked up the responsibility.
So their salary to the district did not change, their benefit.
Yes.
Package changed, half of which is being paid for by VZ, half of which is being paid for by RSU 22.
That's correct, that's correct.
So, so Rick, you indicated that $28,600 are going into our, is a revenue.
Yes.
To the district.
Yes.
Now, can, do we know which article that would go in or is that a blanket?
It's not in an article, it's a revenue stream.
Revenue stream.
So we wouldn't use that revenue to help offset any one article?
No. Look at it as a, as an amount that supports the budget in aggregation. Revenue is not itemized.
Quick point of order while you're waiting on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Can I make, can I make a motion or?
Jay made a motion, we have a second.
We have a second.
I will second the motion.
Okay, opening it up, thank you.
I thought we had a second.
No. But that's good, thank you, Scott, I was trying to be polite.
I thought we were.
I thought you just had a question.
No, I was just trying to.
I want to, if you, oh, let me see here. If you envisioned this sheet with me in your budget booklet that you all have memorized, underneath the revenue, if I can find it here. She had a C of VZ or something. There it is, other, VZ. So the revenue is scripted right there in an itemized fashion to support the other revenue, or we expected the gate receipts, E-rate, and so on and so.
Let me see, how does it differ from money received from tuition or anything, gate receipts or other things, as far as how it's spent within the school district?
It doesn't.
It just applies to the.
It's just, it's just integrated to support the total expenditures. So you have about 11 different lines of revenue in that, but that interface aligns with expenditures.
Well, my point being is, is what if we had six of these agreements, you know, and we were bringing in $800,000 worth of revenue?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't that all, all be used in system administration?
Well, okay, the way I'd answer that is you could adjust your system administration line, but all the revenue plays into that, the state funding, the gate receipts, the tuition, the E-rate, everything plays in this, the, the, the revenue is not itemized per article.
Yeah, no, but it would just be nice to be able to use that.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
You know, especially if, if the state's not going to fund system administration and we're actually.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Paying for ourselves in that area.
Well, maybe we need to follow your question the next year or two with respect to what is the. Well, maybe we need to follow your question the next year or two with respect to what does the funding formula look like? And then the regionalization concept that came up earlier tonight and then your question. And then the question becomes later down the road, how does that then play into the budget either in itemization or in totality, will?
Particularly as it affects this VZ conversation. I heard two things. I heard penalized and I heard incentivized for the regionalization. Which is it? Because if it's incentivized, theoretically what we're doing will now be rewarded or at least with what we did with VZ, what we've done, working with Frankfurt, et cetera. But what does it mean? Does it mean moving forward if you don't do additionally, you're now penalized? Because we've already made steps moving forward in a way of de facto regionalization. If we continue to keep that as a status quo, will we be penalized because we haven't done anything else?
You're too fast out of the box.
You're too fast out of the box.
Good question. I'd like to work the premise that districts will be incentivized.
Incentivized.
But again, legislation and the governor's position to change that. If, that reminds me, Rob, and I don't want to debate it tonight, but I still can't figure out how the legislature overrode the referendum vote in November that three percent is two hundred thousand dollars. Because remember, getting back to Heath's question, that money was earmarked for public education. So when the voters affirmed on November date, whatever it was, three percent, and I can't remember the million dollar figure, it was aligned with it. Well, let's just make it up. Let's say it's twenty-five million. And then the legislature negated that. That was twenty-five million that was taken away from public education that the voters supported back in November. How did that happen?
My understanding is they thought it was worth about a hundred thirty million and that that may be coincidental with the amount that's being put into schools next year to do the full fifty-five percent funding, but that would just be my opinion.
The simple answer is, once it's enacted by the voters, it becomes a statute like any other statute and it's subject to amendment or repeal by the legislature. It's true that they have the authority to do that.
And apparently the gall.
Well, it's not the first time.
Oh, it's the dozenth time in the last ten years.
That's how that.
I have a, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Well, I have a question regarding, so in putting together the fact on the VZ, the response to the frequent ask question about the VZ agreement, one of the things I'm doing is I'm answering it as saying, the VZ agreement is three separate agreements essentially. There was an administrative agreement, there was a tech agreement, and then there's a business services agreement.
Correct.
This sheet, are we ratifying, excuse me, are we ratifying the business services and the tech agreement at the same time or is that what we're talking about doing?
Yes, you're ratifying the whole, you're ratifying the whole thing.
And what is left of the administrative, because we're no longer doing superintendent services.
That's correct.
It's just Gloria's assistant to.
That's exactly right. That's a good clarifying question that we want to be very transparent with. Because remember, prior to that, that revenue coming to the district is even more after I retired and now that's passed on to Superintendent slash Principal Seer.
Right.
Well, I have a question.
Last meeting when we went to look at this, I believe there was a request to have the actual contract to look at before we voted on it.
And we did, last time we did have that contract. What will happen here is that I would just attach it as a supplement.
I think last meeting when we went to look at this, I believe Scott had asked to have an actual copy of the contract before we voted on the contracts.
Okay.
At a board meeting. And I didn't see that contract in the board packet.
Okay. That is true.
Okay.
We can add that to the July eighteen.
Good.
Yeah, we could. We could.
A quick agenda, mine.
Okay. All right.
I think that, I know that community relations, I'm really looking forward to seeing what you guys are able to pull together with Ann because I felt that when we met with Ann and she really gave us that detail of how this works, where it's a completely separate bucket with a completely separate book. It was really helpful to really shed light on this and I look forward to seeing what you guys pull together for the community.
Ann has pulled together a really nice slideshow that she presented at the community relations meeting and she has made up a really nice graphic that explains a very complicated concept and she has it separated out really nicely. So she's talked about actually narrating an online presentation as well as coming to a full board meeting.
Which would go great on the Facebook page.
Is that something we wanted to have before the school year starts, like at our next board meeting? Or is that, not the eighteen?
I think maybe we'll throw that to the community relations committee, they can talk about how they want to rule that out.
Well, I'm not committee, so I'll bring that out.
There you go. Do we need a motion to table this till next week?
We need somebody to withdraw their motion.
Motion to table also.
Okay. Next topic on the is discuss an act on the school budget, which we're not going to do.
We will not do till the eighteen.
And do we want, anything further to discuss regarding July twenty-fifth district budget?
So should we talk about the, basically the drivers behind what we will see come through in the articles? We mentioned, for those that weren't here, for the budget meeting that we would support the administrative recommendation for a point-five FTE art teacher for K through one and a point-five FTE tech integrator for K through eight. Members of staff and admin are here to answer any questions that board members had of the reasoning behind that, for those that weren't here. I think those had a total impact of eighty to eighty-five thousand based on salary and benefit, which still falls within the additional amount that was increased at the June eighth budget. However, you know, that, again, we're now possibly moving forward with a new recommendation for a budget on August first that will look somewhat different than that, but will at least reflect the spirit of that. So I think this is going towards that effort. Were there any questions on that of board members? And then we also had a recommendation to increase the Article Six for the second budget cycle, not a large amount, six thousand, I think was the number thrown out there. And there was a question about some other positions that were discussed for possible restoration. One was an instructional coach and one was a Section five oh four assistant, which is an EdTech three position. I assume that if we're going to work those into the budget at the next meeting, that there may be a little bit more discussion with the full board tonight's meeting. If the chair would entertain that, I don't know. It's all I had for really budget driver that would possibly change that. And obviously they all have the impact on reducing local share. Again, I think if we take the new positions as part of the equation that we're communicating back, that were part of our previous resolution and take the fact that the impact of the state will be to reduce the local share probably by two hundred fifty thousand, if not more, that we've basically followed through with our intent. But is there anything looking at discussion approval to line that up so that it's ready to include in the budget?
Rick, Regan, there's a lot of ideas in addition to what?
Right. You mentioned, for example, the other couple things were substitute costs increasing there. Also, we might want to look at material lines for our schools to make sure that we're not asking extra burdensome from faculty, so we'll look at that. The other thing I would ask is maybe, what's the, I'll look at Heath because he's brought it up a couple times. Does the board have a target that we should be looking at to reduce that five point eight local down to? Is our target to reduce that down to two percent? Because obviously, as I shared with the budget committee tonight, a local percentage is about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So if we want to get that down to two percent, that's a three point eight, let's round that to four percent. That's roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we should suppress that. So does the board have a target that you want us to look at when we present this budget to you next week?
The two percent is something that we started talking about very early in the process, back when it was in finance, like early winter. That was a kind of our goal with the Article twenty, was to be able to reduce to two percent. You know, ifs and buts and everything that we were trying to figure in. But that was just, you know, that's been a thought that we've had for a while.
Can I just clarify too? When we're talking two percent, are we talking overall or specific to one town?
Overall.
Overall.
Because wasn't it?
Winterport's going to be more.
Yeah, what was it initially? The overall, wasn't it?
Four point five eight?
Oh, was it?
Four point five eight or four point eight five?
But again, your question's a good one. That's a two percent overall and each town is based on the eighty-twenty formula evaluation and pupil count. So you'll have a deviation among the four towns. That also, I think, which you all think I know right now, that really trumps the fifty percent rule, remember? Because if you did the two percent, you're expanding four hundred fifty-two thousand and fifty percent is about, what, two hundred fifty, two hundred seventy thousand? So you're well over the fifty percent if you know that rule.
I think you, I mean, I think if we look at what we had to work with, which is the June eighth budget and then consider the ideas you suggested from admin team, but also some of these additional ideas, I have, I have a feeling we all still have enough funds to be able to come at or close to two percent. So I say work the numbers and see what you get.
And there was two percent's a goal, okay.
Yeah, and that's essentially what we were aiming for with the resolution.
Okay.
Frank? Yeah.
We need to stick onto the bond.
The two positions that we talked about is a recommendation from the budget committee. If there's additional monies in Article One, that actually allows the admin team and staff to go back and look at the other potential positions. And whether we add them or not is really at the discretion at that point of staff or which one. Because we don't know if the monies are there if we don't hit that target, so.
Okay.
Two percent sounds like a reasonable.
Very good. Two percent.
Great. New business.
Discuss an act on administrative compensation package. You have an exhibit before you. All the administrators, just for our new board members, basically I evaluate the administrators. We work from annual goals. We use the Marzano evaluation model, which philosophically dovetails with the Marzano model that the administrators use for the teaching and the faculty as well. So based on that and the demographics of a number of things statewide, region-wise and so on and so forth, my recommendation is outlining the exhibit. I have made a couple of adjustments that hopefully are self-explanatory with my overview for you. Most notably Dawn Moore with her heavy involvement in the public pre-K program and other responsibilities that come about because of her school being a priority school. Nick Raymond, we want to congratulate tonight because he's advanced his certificate with a certificate of advanced study degree, which is the degree just prior to your PhD. So with those recommendations, I would ask the board's support and certainly answer any questions you may have.
I'd make a motion that we approve the administrative pay increases as presented.
Do we have a second before?
And then I have a, I have two points. One is, so looking at Principal Moore's compensation, there's a three percent increase and then there is additionally a ten-day per diem, which that's what gives you the five percent number.
No, there's a per diem increase and five percent on top of that.
Okay.
Okay.
So the per diem is not part of that salary right there?
Yeah, yes. So you take, so yes, it is, the per diem. You would take the salary and divide it by two hundred and forty days, which uses a per diem, then take that per diem times ten and then a hundred and five on top of that, Scott.
Yep, I was, my per diem number was wrong.
Okay.
And is that specifically to assisting with the pre-K?
Pre-K. And also, Rob, just to reiterate, Dawn had a priority school, how many years, Dawn?
Yeah, focus school.
Focus school, yeah. And that's a, that's a heavy workload with that. And also, as you all know, Dawn's worked very aggressively in supporting our pre-K program. We're still focusing on the sixty thousand. We're going to get, I just want to let you know that we aren't quite there yet, but we'll work on that. So she's done a nice job with that.
The only thing that I really respect and admire our admin team, so I don't, I hope this doesn't come out wrong. But if this is based on performance.
Yes, it is.
Typically, there is variance because you have high, high performers and then you have not so high performers. And the fact that they all have a, you know, three percent is just, to me, a little bit of a, I see that. How could that be? That everybody is at the same level of performance.
Yeah, that's a good observation. I'd answer that by saying that I think we're very fortunate, have a very strong administrative team that has a lot of similarities. You'd have the deviation that I can substantiate because of significant shortcomings or on the other end of the continuum, on very significant accomplishments and achievements. There's no perfect matrix for that, Karen, but in order for me to come to the board and say a person deserves or I'm recommending one percent, I'd have to have a very strong substantiation that person's performance aligned with the one percent, which I have done in the past historically. The other thing I would add though, not to make a difference here, but I think, we've talked about this over the last one or two years. The new administrators we're bringing into the district and the new administrators are coming into the state of Maine are demanding, and rightfully so, getting higher salaries because of the magnitude of the job in the year two thousand seventy versus what it was in two thousand five. And I've indicated to you in my position, not to talk about Rick Lyons, but when Rick Lyons leaves, you're going to have the same thing with respect to the superintendency. So I think the landscape has changed, the sand beneath our feet has changed significantly for administration in the last three to five years. So that also adds in the equation. But basically, the answer is the performance of our administrative team.
So with these increases, are we within the proposed budget or are we going to have to increase our budget to meet the?
I'd say we're, we budgeted three percent. So the only variance you have there is Mrs. Moore, that's going to be ever so slightly, so. The other thing that can shift, and I don't know this for sure, but it goes back to, I think, what Rob was alluding to earlier with the VZ contract. If someone were to change their health insurance, it could shift significantly. So out of our administrative team of seven rates on this sheet, that could also change that as well.
How does the, so, I mean, there's essentially a three, just a hair over three percent increase on average then? How does that compare with the increase, the average increase in the teaching contract?
Teaching contract is three point four five.
Okay.
Is that, is that the sheer?
The sheer.
Three point four five, the sheer. What was it the past year?
What was it?
Wouldn't it have been the same last year because of the contract?
No.
No. Usually it came from it. I don't know what it was.
I can't reposit you.
There were two.
It wasn't exactly the same year.
No.
It wasn't. And then, then the first year, usually the three different, the three different things.
I know it was a ten percent over three years.
Yes.
Ten percent over three years.
Yeah.
Okay.
And of course, the support staff, remember, we had the deviation in the support staff where we had some people, remember, at five percent and a group at four percent and a group at three percent. So we had three layers within that contract as well.
That's just the base position. There's also step increase, you're right. There was, I think it was three percent per year, but it can comp, because it's compounded, it's nine point nine or, it's close to ten.
That's correct.
Any other questions or discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor of the motion? Is there anyone that's opposed?
Thank you.
Rob keeps moving his hand.
I usually sit over there.
Okay, setting meeting dates. Do we have any dates we need to set?
July eighteenth. Let's get our count up. So July eighteenth, we'll have a two-item agenda. Number one will be the VZ, including the comprehensive contract. The number two would be to ratify the recommendations from the budget committee relevant to the budget that Rob has outlined tonight. So July eighteenth.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock Tuesday. And that meets our timeline conditions with respect to the state because we have to have the seven-day notice, which takes us perfectly to the twenty-fifth and keeps us on August one with the referendum validation. So seven o'clock, G O D meeting, and I believe that's the only one. Okay. Perfect.
We do need to schedule a community relations committee meeting because we did not schedule one at the end of the last and I'm not going to get one in prior to the next, the next board meeting.
Well, it might be nice to have it after so that we can organize our thoughts to get it out before the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, the twenty-fifth is really the important time.
So.
Can we have it before, by the twenty-first, because then I'm gone for a week.
I could do Thursday the twentieth.
Thursday the twentieth?
Can we do, can we do like four, four-thirty again like we did before?
Four, four-thirty.
Let's call it four.
Good. Have it?
Great.
We need an athletics committee meeting before, prior to the August two meeting. What, you guys, we really need you two. Tony, do you have anything available? What's best for you?
Nothing. I have a class every Tuesday, Thursday through August. So Tuesday, Thursdays are out. The only option.
Do you have any time, like mornings?
I'm booked in my office seven thirty to six forty-five.
Five days?
Four days.
I know.
He does have to hold it on weekends.
I do.
He does, he holds teeth even on the weekends.
Yeah, I heard. So not that you don't have any.
I mean, you book something, I'll make an, I'll make an attempt to get there, but this summer's just packed.
Any evening zone?
Classes, classes, school board meetings.
I've never been to an athletics committee.
I know.
I want, well, I want two already.
Well, we just, that. Well, we just, that Glenn Bird discussion, we just need some board discussion.
Make it.
Doesn't, can it be somebody other than, can we just appoint a couple people?
I could try to.
Someone else can come to the board.
We'll just schedule on then.
Yeah.
Rick or Regan, I realize we schedule the time for a meeting. How do we get a room? Do we speak with one of you, or will you just handle that and let us know what room we'll be in?
You can do it one of two ways. Either you can just email Gloria, and Gloria, email Gloria, and Gloria will take care of it.
Okay.
And the discussion of the athletic reminded me of bus, bus reminded me of the UTC discussion for budget next week, at least to have understanding around the UTC issue and what that means.
Yes.
Review of the, I flipped over my notes. I saw there were other recommendations, one of which was substitute teacher review. There was a citizen suggestion to look at subtime allowances for teachers or increasing the subtime. And I think that was it.
Materials, UTC, that's correct.
Any other meeting dates? We need a building committee meeting. Would you like a building committee meeting?
Yeah, please tell me when, and they'll be here.
Alan's flexible. We have members on building committees who are related to other committees, and we could try to tie them back to back so people aren't having to come out twice.
I was going to say, we could do after the meeting on the twenty-seventh, community relations committee. We say five o'clock.
That's on the twentieth.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
As can say.
Yes. That Thursday, whatever that Thursday, we make it five o'clock? I'm hoping to push it. That would be a new record. Maybe five-thirty? Be smart, rather than thirty.
Let's head and just wait with the budget situation and see how that goes, and then we'll schedule it in. It's not an emergency. We just have to, that way we won't have to.
Mostly the Winterport Water District bid is what we need to discuss.
And we have another Winterport.
Twenty-fifth?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other meetings?
We could do a five-thirty meeting.
They just keep coming. All right, could I ask for a motion to move into an executive session, please? And you will have to read it from the note.
Motion to enter executive session, discuss a little. Yeah, let's plan on that, twenty-fifth at five-thirty.
All those in favor? Great, thank you.